Welcome to South River Mayor Borough Council Meeting Number 13, held today on August 2nd, 2021, 8:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Now reading the statement of notice of publication. Clerk?
In compliance with chapter 231, 1:00 AM, 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the New School slash Elementary School Cafeteria in 3 Main, 5th Street, South River, has been published in the Home District Review on July 30th, posted on the municipal building, going toward the Borough website. The first door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, and on the said cafeteria door.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Prinzo?
Here.
Captain woman Dallas?
Here.
Captain President Seula?
Here.
Here.
Captain Andrew Gertensky?
Here.
Captain woman Mira?
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you. Will it stand for its litre flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one more silence. Thank you. Please be seated. The next portion of our agenda is for proclamations, honors, awards, and presentations, and we do have a proclamation. Whereas Drew Pearson was born and raised in South River, and was a 1969 graduate of South River High School, where he was first a wide receiver, then quarterback for the South River Football Team, which was the Central Jersey Group Three Champions in 1968, finishing third in the state, and where he received an individual All-State Award and was selected as Back of the Year by the New Brunswick Touchdown Club. And whereas Drew Pearson went to University of Tulsa on a football scholarship, where he started as quarterback and then became a wide receiver, and where he received a university president's award as the team's best spirited and most unselfish member in 1973, and in 1985 was inducted into the Tulsa Hall of Fame. And whereas Drew Pearson was signed by the Dallas Cowboys and became one of the NFL's greatest wide receivers, being named to the NFL 1970s All-Decade Team, and one of the top 20 pro football all-time wide receivers. And whereas Drew Pearson, known as a clutch catcher in game-winning situations, including the game-sealing touchdown in the 1973 playoff game against the Los Angeles Rams, the game-winning touchdown in the 1974 Thanksgiving Game against the Washington Redskins, and the most well-known hail mary reception from Roger Staubach that resulted in the Cowboy victory in the 1975 playoff game. And whereas Drew Pearson, with all of his great football accomplishments, has continued to be a great role model for the youth of both his hometown and the rest of the country by his example of good sportsmanship and fair play, and by continuing to give back to his hometown and to the many worthy causes. And whereas Drew Pearson has exemplified throughout his life the values of the Football Hall of Fame of commitment, integrity, courage, and respect. And whereas we as residents and officials of the Borough of South River have received and continue to receive the benefit of Drew Pearson's personal example, and continue dignified and proud representation of our entire borough, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the Borough of South River, on behalf of all of the residents of South River, celebrate Drew Pearson for his accomplishments and inspiring example of commitment to excellence, for his induction into the National Football Hall of Fame. I hereby declare August 8th, 2021 Drew Pearson Day, the Borough of South River, given under my hand and seal, the Borough of South River, New Jersey, this day in August. Congratulations, Mr. Pearson. It has been a long time coming, and to celebrate it on the 8th, he will be inducted into the Football Hall of Fame, and Roger Staubach will be the presenter. So we wish him the very best, and in a little way, his hometown here celebrates with him. Congratulations, Drew Pearson. Let's see, on our agenda, the Agenda Session concerning the South River Restaurant and Bar Stimulus. We did not discuss this at our last meetings. Who's going to take this to discuss? This was put on because I believe our clerk had brought this out, that we have a situation where it is possible to give some relief to our restaurants and bars, because we have enough money in our fund. And the question is, would we be willing to do that? In other words, instead of charging them the usual amount for our liquor license, we can either charge them nothing or something less, depending on the financial situation. That's what we're here to discuss. Does anyone have any thoughts on it, or should we just tell Mr. Zanga, Mr. Liedenski to work on that, so that we can pass the resolution at our August 23rd meeting concerning however much relief we can give them?
Mr. Mayor, I had brought this up. I did see that our previous clerk had mentioned to the borough last year, as well as the beginning of this year, regarding this as a way to help our local businesses that might be struggling or have struggled because of the pandemic. My question is, I know it has here that South River has always, well, has since 1982 charged an extra $200 on retail liquor license holders. Do we know what the total is that we have in that account right now? $124,000. Do we know the total of licenses that we have in South River right now?
There's about 32 licenses, now 45 on top.
So I just merely brought this up because it was something that our clerk had mentioned, that nobody went forward with. I was hoping we had done this before we raided everybody's license, but being that that was impossible, I still wanted to bring it up, see what we could do, and know if we should still continue to take this extra $200 every year. If we're not, we've never, have we ever used it to buy a license back? Are you sure? Okay. Okay, so again, this was to bring it up. We've never done it. We're holding money, we're taking money from the businesses to one day do something, but 1982 is almost 40 years now, so. That was why I brought it up, and I'm sure that's why Mr. Briggs rounded up as well.
Then would you please give us a financial report on this, Mr. Zanga, with possible recommendations? Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Mayor, for bringing it up. Moving on to our ordinances, some of these ordinances will be voted on tonight, some of them will be carried to next Monday. There will be a special meeting next Monday at 61 Main, shouldn't say that. There will be a special meeting next Monday. I'll talk more about that at the end of the meeting. Ordinance 2021-06. Madam Clerk?
In accordance with the Doris South River Committee of the Middlesex State of New Jersey, in accordance with the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, entitled "Settlement."
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gertensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. We open this up to the public. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward and speak about this, please give your name and address. First call, second call, third call.
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, Mrs. Ballas? Okay, Mr. Gindi made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we carry the public hearing over to the August 9th meeting.
I'll second that. Madam Attorney, is that proper?
Yes.
Okay, then. Motion has been made to carry this to the, carry the public hearing, and then subsequent vote will occur on August the 9th. It's been made by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would think maybe we would like to explain what happened, because as you can see, there might be people in the audience that came today for this ordinance, thinking that we'd be voting on it today, and we are not.
There was a problem with the advertisement, in terms of it. Although people who are interested know where it was going to be heard, and where this meeting was going to be heard, technically, it has to be part of the advertisement as to when the ordinance is going to be heard. So this ordinance, number seven, number eight, and number nine, all have that defect. Therefore, we are going to open it up to the public. You can come forth and speak. We will close this portion, and then have the hearing, again, and carry the hearing, because it's a technical requirement, we'll carry the hearing until the August 9th meeting, where we'll reopen it to the public, and then vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know at the last meeting, when we had this discussion, I was kind of waiting to see when you were going to make your decision of having this meeting here at the school, and you chose not to do that at the last meeting. I think that falls a little bit on you as to clarifying a little better how to publicize this meeting, or where it's going to be. You kind of left it out, like an open-ended question at the end of the meeting, like you didn't know where this meeting was going to be.
I did not know whether it was going to be a Zoom meeting, whether we were going to have to wear masks. I didn't know a lot of things. And I don't know about next week's meeting. At the rate things are going, it may be a Zoom meeting. Don't know that. As it is, we will make that decision on Wednesday, just depending on what the governor decides. They've made new rulings now, today, I understand, about having meetings. It may become mandatory, that if you're going to have an indoor meeting, you may have to all wear masks. I don't know. I requested that we have it, that you bring a mask with you, just in case, that it became mandatory sometime today. That's why, that's why I delayed it. And that's why I can't say absolutely for certain that we're going to have to be meeting at 61 Main Street next August 9th. We will make the official announcement as we go along during the week, depending on what is happening. And again, it might have to be a Zoom meeting. I don't know. Events are occurring quickly. Decisions are coming from on high. Let's try and do the best we can. Roll call.
Captain woman Dallas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
Captain man Gindi?
Yes.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
No.
And we have some news for the borough.
Yes.
We will revisit this on August the 9th. The 2021-07 ordinance.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, in accordance with the Middlesex State of New Jersey, and in accordance with the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, entitled "Settlement."
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the full reading.
Seconded. Motion has been made by Councilman Seula to waive the full reading, seconded by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, this concerns the licenses for cannabis facilities. Please give your name and address. Come forward, ask questions, make comments. On first call, second call, third call, motion to close, motion, well, no, motion to adjourn on this. Mr. Seula?
I'd like to make a motion to carry this for the public hearing over to the August 9th meeting.
Seconded. Okay. Motion has been made by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
Captain man Gindi?
Yes.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
Yeah.
And Captain man Gudelberg?
Yes.
Okay. We will revisit this next Monday. Moving on to ordinance 2021-08. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, in accordance with the Middlesex State of New Jersey, and in accordance with the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, entitled "Cannabis."
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address. First call, second call, third call, close.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we carry this over to the, for public hearing, over to the August 9th meeting.
Seconded. Motion has been made by Councilman Seula to carry this until the August 9th meeting, seconded by Councilman Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Captain woman Dallas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
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 Captain woman Mira?
Yes.
And Captain woman Gudelberg?
Yes.
Okay. We'll revisit this on August the 9th. Moving on to 2021-09. Madam Clerk?
The ordinance of the Boroughs and Berrys, in accordance with the Community Development Grant, is pending.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the full reading.
Seconded. Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address. You can ask any questions or make any comments. On first call, second call, third call, motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we carry this for public hearing over to the August 9th meeting.
Seconded. Motion has been made by Councilman Seula to carry this public hearing until the August 9th meeting, and seconded by Councilman Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Captain woman Ballas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
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 Captain woman Mira? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We will revisit this on August the 9th. The next three we will be voting on tonight. Ordinance 2021-10.
All ordinance providing for Berrys Capital Equipment, and the acquisition of Berrys Capital Equipment.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Councilman Seula.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, please give your name and address, if you'd like to make any comments or any questions. On first call, second call, third call, motion. Motion to close the public portion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the bond ordinance.
Make a motion to remove the bond ordinance.
Motion has been made by Councilman Seula.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Captain woman Ballas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
Captain man Gindi?
Yes.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
Yes.
And Captain man Gudelberg?
Yes.
Yeah, the bond ordinance has been passed. Mr. Zanga, at the time of your comment, you could explain a little bit more detail as to what that's all about. Count, ordinance 2021-11. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, in accordance with the Middlesex State of New Jersey, and in accordance with the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, entitled "Cannabis." Currently reserved as fire committee of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Councilman Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, please give your name and address. You can come forward, ask any questions, make any comments. On first call, second call, third call, motion. Motion has been made to close the public portion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Councilwoman Ballas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Gertensky. Discussion. Roll call.
Captain woman Ballas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Abstain.
Captain man Gindi?
Abstain.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
Yes.
And Captain man Gudelberg?
Yes.
The ordinance has been passed. Ordinance 2021-12. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance that met with the ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain Borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, you may come forward, please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments. First call, second call, third call, motion has been made by Mrs. Ballas to close the public portion, seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Make a motion to move the ordinance.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Seula.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gindi. Discussion. Roll call.
Captain woman Ballas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
Captain man Gindi?
Yes.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
Yes.
And Captain man Gudelberg?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance's first reading by title only, ordinance 2021-13.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, in accordance with the Middlesex State of New Jersey, and in accordance with the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter 36, entitled "Settlement."
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Well, yes, I'm sorry. Make a move that the council, the ordinance, 2021-13, on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law for a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on August the... 23rd. 23rd, I'm sorry, there we go. In the council chambers, in the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second that. Just a minute, if I may suggest adding the words "at 7:00 PM."
At 7:00 PM.
At 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey, and/or virtually via Zoom.
Virtual isn't going to be in Zoom.
You accept those amendments?
I accept them.
You accept those amendments, Mr. Gindi? Motion has been made by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Captain woman Ballas?
Yes.
Captain President Seula?
Yes.
Yes.
Captain man Gertensky?
Yes.
Captain woman Mira?
Yes.
And Captain man Gudelberg?
Yes.
We shall revisit this on August 23rd. That's either 61 Main Street, and/or virtually via Zoom.
Yes.
Just a quick question. Could you, I know it says to repeal such such an area entitled "Parking," can you state what is standing in the board?
This ordinance, which was adopted several years ago, allows a developer to come into town, and instead of having enough parking, can purchase parking spots for a set amount of money. This is moving to repeal that, in light of certain developments that are coming in.
Okay, now, would this have to go, I know we're doing first hearing, does it have to go to the planning board as well, before it comes back to us?
Yes, it does. It's in, it's in the...
It's in yours.
Does the planning board meet in between now and then?
Yeah.
The planning meeting is before our next meeting, the 23rd?
Is it before the 23rd?
Yes, it is.
If it's before the 23rd, then we're okay?
It's before 23rd.
If it's not before the 23rd, we'd have to move back meeting.
Tell you right now, I'm not...
It's in the notification.
I just want to verify before we advertise and have to do it again, and have a different meeting.
17.
Try to dig on all this 17.
17, okay.
Anything else? Okay.
How is it?
We then move to our reports. We'll move to our professionals first. Mr. Cosh?
Thank you. Good evening, all. The 2020 and 2021 DOT vocal aids roads, the permanent sidewalking, are at the DOT for review. They get 30 days to review it, and on August 16th, we'll check with them, because that is when the 30 days expire. And if they have any comments, we'll pick a bit, put it out, see what they can do, or address them, try to ask them to allow us to pick a debate and move forward with it. The 2020 applications that were submitted to the DOT, we'll probably hear about the reports in October or November. For the electrical substation maintenance, the routine maintenance has been completed. The remaining work is to change the cables and the sweeps. The sweeps were decayed, cables are old, the pipe truck is going to wait until the fall, when the heat temperature subsides, they'll have to shut down the circuit, doesn't put more load on other circuits in the station. Well number two, the well is in, they're for the foundation, they're beginning to work on site piping, it's moving along nicely. I just remind everybody that even when it's done, it's permitting requires line tests and permitting, which will take up more time, so it's not necessarily ready. So we're coming out of the summer soon, in the peak usage, so it will definitely be in place for next year, or, and much sooner, but I do believe that it's moving along nicely. And Councilwoman Mayor and I have been keeping in touch on the safe streets of the school. That has a deadline in my book, or keep, we have plenty of time to keep working on. And that is my report.
Any questions for the Borough Engineer?
And you...
Oh, sorry.
Please. Bruce, thank you for responding to my email. So we know that legislation was signed in regard to the lead pipes.
Yes.
I was able to look into, you know, from my understanding age, South River doesn't have a lot of lead pipes, they have lead joints. Can we see if we're required to change out the, if it's a requirement for the joints to be swapped out under that legislation?
I can check, but I don't think so. You'd usually shoot, pound it in, and then the lead goes around and hold again. I think that's the method on the aspiring type, but I will gladly look into that through, and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, I had, first I want to say thank you for sending me the information you had on the Wilcox treaty. I knew that that was in 2018. I just, like, one, why did we not put it on the 2019 DOT? Is that something that we threw off, because now it's on the 2020? Is there, like, a specific reason?
I don't recall how the form was made to not have it on there. How, why the Wilcox one wasn't done sooner? I can remember the history on that. I don't really work on this. I could try to find the documentation, but actually, no, how that happened.
I'm glad you found your 2020 repairs. I do know that you also had made a proposal for the Francis one, the first time you brought it up. Would you maybe refresh our minds next meeting, just to know what that proposal is?
Sure, I can pull that up for you.
You can always keep that in mind.
Yep.
I ask this because it is very important. I know you guys, I bring it up at every meeting, but once it gets cold and all that water starts freezing it between Francis and Alchesky, that's when we're going to keep having problems. And if we've got bundles of money that we've been saving lately, I think we can spare some money and maybe put this into a job, especially since, you know, none of our projects started yet. So again, I'm reaching out to try to get that on there.
I remember that being a fairly expensive project. I think on the order of $190,000 to $200,000, going by members, so I could be wrong, but my point, or reason for bringing that up is the DOT this year, putting in bulk in the region, or 99% of them, to three road projects.
I understand. You said that last meeting, but I'm saying if we, as a borough, can add it to a project that we can, that we are starting, and we'd be worth a bid, that's what I mean.
And I'm... And I'm trying to point where we're going to be looking for more expensive ones, which in order to keep your grant award up. Because if it's kind of a free small one, we won't be getting numbers that we can get. So we're not taking money away from the towns. We just have to work hard and find the structure.
Okay.
All right.
And then my last question. I know we're working on well number two. I don't know if this is a question for you or for Adrian, but two weeks ago, I was down at Veterans Field, and there's a lot of water being pumped out to that wooded area between the Borough Yard and Veterans Field. Is that from the well? Is that what we're... What we're doing with the water? Like, what's that situation?
Well, if it was, like, was it in the Willow Wick ditch? I'm thinking the Willow Wick ditch runs right through there. Was it the Willow Wick ditch? I'm wondering if the contractor would reason with part of the well where they were developing the well and running the well and perhaps discharging it to the Willow Wick ditch, which runs, comes down, does a dog run in, runs down the side.
Okay, I was just... Somebody had asked me, a resident had asked me, if it was coming from the Borough Yard. I just didn't know if it was the well or if we're supposed to be doing that.
I would think so, and that's pure groundwater. That's not treated water. That's water out of the aquifer to develop the well, so you're flushing, you're bringing water up, pushing water back down. You clear out the aggregate around the screen, down to the bottom. That is what they're doing. I don't know, but I think there's... I think there's more than likely that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Bruce.
Bruce, I believe we did do some remediation on Wilcox Street too a while back, as far as storage and drainage goes. I believe we moved the storage sewer around the corner to accommodate some drainage in the winter time.
We did it from another street, maybe seven or eight years ago.
Okay.
Came down and ran through there, but it still comes up. It's those two sub well. There was one sub well. Now there's a second one further up the road. I'm trying to make sure I got my streets correct. Okay, I'm talking about Wilcox up there.
Yeah.
So we added even a couple more elements in the actual design. We went up to the higher sub well that's now discharging to the two. And then we put another one before the handicap ramp to try and catch water that was coming up the handicap ramp and going down and going across the verge down to the bottom.
Yes.
So we've kind of tweaked the design a little bit to try to address some conditions that we found walking in again.
Great. Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bruce. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Bye, Bruce.
Mr. Zanga, if you could buy a microphone or so and just give a quick report.
Thank you. There's a few items. We had a one tax roll filed last week, as we did initially. Not over 35 days. We've made those. Tax could be by 1/25th. If not be by 1/25th, we can do the tax roll.
So there's a grace period.
Very, very long.
Check this one out.
Not paid by that, you can do that. Your resident, you were a resident of Wilcox, and you're a resident of Wilcox. That's very one of the things about these. Fundments during the food, 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 various programs, which is our street, territory to bring forth. They could deal in funding for 75,000, 575,000. Also include various services and programs. They do involve working tables, doing sanitation jobs, basically on top. Um, for, 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 for. Include various building improvements, 51 H, and fire improvements.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Zanga? Okay, very good. Mr. Sorres, how are you, sir? Anything to report? Sure.
Guys, good day, mate. We had a truck.
Get it out to 516 and Route 9 and not overload Borden Town Avenue, which has already reached its capacity. So we ask that for your load. And the other thing is, ordinance number 219, this is appointment of administrative assistant for the utility department. We had six, I, one person backed out before the interviews. And of the five candidates, Mr. Zanga, Mr. Dudus, and myself interviewed all five. And the candidate that we're putting up was the best qualified for the position. That's all I have.
Anything for our bureau administrator?
I do, Mr. Landerski. Were any of the people you interviewed have speak more than one language?
Yes, a couple of them did. The candidate that we've chose has some basic Portuguese, Spanish Portuguese. But we looked at all the qualifications. That was one of the points. Her customer service background and just her qualities. We all agreed that she was the number one candidate and we offered her the job. And she accepted the position.
I only bring this up because once again, we have one employee at 48 Washington who speaks more than one language in one department, who is currently, isn't she currently in the utilities department? Our employee who speaks more than one language, what department is she currently in?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Our borough employee at 48 Washington that currently speaks more than one language.
Yes.
What department is she currently in?
Utilities.
In the utilities. I just push that going forward again, the people we hire, if they can please speak or help assist our customers. I think South River, we know how diverse it is. We know that a lot of people need some assistance. And going forward, please try to reach out to be able to serve our customers. You know.
Well, councilman, as you know, besides being able to speak other languages, this is an important job to deal with handling of money. And we evaluated the individuals for that position with that in mind, too. I believe just now in tax season, CFO could probably tell us, what are they bringing in a day in cash?
We're currently accepting cash again?
Yes. Cash is legal tender in the United States of America. We cannot not accept cash.
Okay, but we weren't at one point, correct?
Well, we weren't accepting cash when you were putting it in the drop box. Because the drop box would get filled and somebody could put their hand in very easily and take stuff out. Now that we're open, we take cash at the window.
Okay.
We're not happy about it, but we're, we'll take it.
I thought it was my understanding that once we opened, that we still weren't accepting cash. That was new to me, I believe.
I would believe we didn't take cash that we could be open to someone filing a complaint against the borough. But last I know, cash is legal tender in the United States.
What we wanted to do and what we have to do are two different things.
We, let me just, we are working on our utility billing with the new billing company, where you will be able to take direct deposit out of your accounts. So that will alleviate, but there are the number of people who don't have bank accounts in town. And without a banking account, they can't issue a check, you know, going to get a money order. They have to pay for the money order. So they are technically legally allowed to pay with cash.
Do we know if Opsol, if Opsol is doing the paperless for billing? Okay. I had one more question, but Jason, you can go.
So I want to kind of piggyback off that and learn about the process for hiring. So I know with my job right now, you know, we have to have a set set of questions for each interview. Because from my understanding, those items, you can both, you can be requested. Is the town having a set set of questions for each interview? Or is it, you're asking different questions for each? In other terms, equitable.
Depending, depending on the position, there are different questions that we have to ask. This one dealing with cash and dealing with the public have its own set of questions. You know, other ones, when you're talking about hiring a DPW, there's other sets of questions.
No, absolutely. I just want to make sure each candidate is being asked the same question.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. And then my second question is, you know, as a new councilman, I was able to go through the agendas from the beginning of the year. And one of the things that I noticed was with Agra. And I wanted to bring this up because I've noticed since January, we've spent close to $110,000 with Agra thus far. And out of that money, $60,000 is toward licensed operators. All right? A T2 licensed operator makes about $85,000 a year full time. We're slated to pay this, this company $120,000 roughly. You know, so we're right now paying roughly $35,000 over the market for a licensed water operator. I understand it's a necessity right now because of everything that's happened. But is this sustainable? Are we able to continue this long term? You know, I've heard that we don't have funds, but it looks like $35,000 we can easily recoup by hiring someone in-house.
Yeah. Once we, once we settle our violations with the DEP that came from previous years, we'll be able to go back to lesser hours with an operator. And we would hire an operator that no one in the borough qualified right now to be an operator. Right now, DEP is requiring us 28 hours a week. We can drop that back to 20. And that's, that would be a cost savings. Right now, it's, Agra is doing a lot more than just, that person is doing a lot more just being the operator.
No, absolutely. And I, I noticed that, starting, I believe in April, their fee went up a couple hundred dollars in their monthly operator costs. I just want to make sure within, we're promoting growth within the town. And if there's an individual or individuals within the borough that want to become operators, that they're given that opportunity.
They, they are, I believe, one of the water department personnel now going to school.
That's all I have, Marty. Thank you.
Mr. Landerski, I have one more question. I know now it's vacation time and a lot of people have been out and taking their vacations. Are we having our staff fill in when needed to different departments within 48 Washington?
Yes, we make arrangements when we know that people are on vacation. Certain people in the utility department move from their regular job up to the counter. In the building department, the receptionist takes all the calls and I handle all the administrative parts of the building department.
I just want to make note once more that I know, Mr. Landerski, you are a business administrator, but you do hold a lot of hats. Delegating is one. I know the last few people we hired, we made sure that they were able and would learn more than just their task, their job tasks, to be able to fill in when people are away. You are one person handling various departments by yourself, and I don't think that's right. Especially since we're not paying you to do so. So I just want to say once again, if we need to look into how to delegate within our departments at 48 Washington or teach other members, employees within our 48 Washington how to do other tasks, I think we should be doing that. God forbid you get sick, Mr. Landerski, and can't come in. Those are several departments that you're in charge of yourself.
I just went to the doctor today. I'm the healthiest of the horse.
Why said god forbid?
Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Sure.
To get back off of Councilman Oliver, you said DEP violations. How long is this for? The DEP violations?
Well, we've narrowed most of them down. There are some, the ones that we leave for the end. There are some that are very costly and we're leaving them for the end because we're still negotiating back and forth with them, whether or not we're grandfathered or not. They have provided us with some stuff and we are getting quotes on some of them. I mean, the plant was approved 40 years ago by them. And then they've come up with some changes that they're requiring us to do. And at some point, we were saying that we're grandfathered and they're supplying us with documentation saying that they want certain things. And we're getting down to the bottom of the list. We have not had any issues with them in months. And they understand our work schedule. And there are just a couple of large items that were negotiated with them, yeah.
If there's nothing else, why don't you continue, Mr. Gindi? We'll start with you as we give our various reports.
All right, well, the next planning board meeting is August 17th. Last few meetings have been pretty interesting. A lot of interesting applications coming to the town. Please come out and see what's coming. Next zoning board meeting is going to be August 24th. Parks and Rec, well, we have been working very hard on this. I know that the fireworks was up in the air, but we have come to a date, which is going to be August 26th, which is like Thursday night. I believe after speaking to the superintendent, it looks like that the field will be ready by then. So I'll be talking more about that in my regular comments.
Mrs. Ballas, do you have any comments concerning your liaisons?
I'm not saying at this time, but I did reach out to the cultural and heritage group. But I don't even know what's really left on there to try to get in touch and have an in-person meeting with them.
Very good. Mr. Siula?
Siula is the environmental, they've been doing a lot of tree applications and they're working on that. EBC, they're meeting, they're preparing a welcome package for new residents and new businesses. Help streamline the process and they're all, it's all stolen works. That's all I have right now.
Okay. I knew you were, knew we just got here, Mr. Oliver, but anything to report as to your liaison?
Yeah, I had a Board of, Library Board of Trustees meeting. Evelyn and our team have applied for two grants, the ALA-NASA partnership. This grant is being partnered with the South River Recreation Department. And it's looking to serve underserved youth in the science field. They've also applied for the ARPA grant through the New Jersey State Library Association. And with this, I thought this was an awesome idea on their end. They're looking to purchase crow books and hotspots to lend out to patrons. So as we're in the pandemic, you never know what's going to happen. If you need internet hotspots, please visit the library. They currently have two. And they're looking to purchase seven more crow books and seven more library hotspots. That's all I have there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gudzinski.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've heard from our borough engineer, the well is coming along. And our utilities department had done an excellent job over the particular mishap that we had on Main Street during the paving issue and everything, where a truck had taken a wrong turn. Unfortunately, take that out a few wires and our utility company had come up in flying colors within a minimal amount of time, especially in the season when it's the most demand, when everybody is at home and that's when their users probably are most electricity. Also, the Office on Aging had their seniors day down at the McCowsky Park and everything. And I believe that was pretty successful. With that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My human relations meeting is actually tomorrow at 6:30 via Zoom. So if anybody would like to attend, I know we'll probably be discussing a few applications for flag raising coming in September. I still have not met with the Board of Health, so I have nothing to report yet. And I'm still waiting to be contacted with the Mayor's Advisory Board, the persons with disabilities, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you can reach out. I know I have sometime before, but we still have not met. That's all I have.
Okay. They must be one of the few that have not met. See what happens to them. Oh, that leaves me. Okay. Now, just a quick report in general about, you heard about the taxes that have come in. The percent of differences between 2020 and 2021, as you know, your taxes are basically made up. Your real estate taxes are made up of five components. The local municipal tax rate, the difference between 2020 and 2021 was 3%. The library tax, which is a separate tax, went to 5.75%. The school tax was a minuscule 0.11. The county tax jumped 6.62%. And the county open space tax jumped 5.27%. So basically, that municipal taxes and the school taxes were kept low and, you know, costs go up. So the library, well, the library is set by the state, so they have no control over that. And the county, well, you see, the county is paving its roads and all of everything costs money. And if we want to have open space, well, that costs money, too. Moving on to our agenda, public comments. Please come forward if you have any questions or comments. Please give your name and address. You have 10 minutes to speak per speaker.
Good evening. Richard Byrne, 11th place. I am the chair of the Bureau of Agriculture. And I'm speaking in that role on this panel. I regret going forward to that the spotted lantern fly has arrived here in South River. I've killed over a dozen of them myself in passing. And it's invasive, it has a threat to trees and underrooty plants. They pierce the bark and feed on the sap. And it can be eaten tree and may scream a sugary waste that can attract other damaging pests. And also can cause the growth of mold and fungi. And it's a very deadly thing. Now, according to the State Department of Agriculture, the proper response to a sighting one is to kill it on sight. And then you report it on the Department of Agriculture website. Or you can call their hotline at 1-833-4-BAD-BUB. Millicet County is not a quarantine county, which means they want sightings reported still. I'm guessing that they're going to quarantine, which means they won't require reporting. But yeah, and they might jump when you try to step on them. So if you dance and skills, but they're here. And if you see him, if you see something, say something.
Do they actually fly or?
Yeah, they, they, they fly, but. Jump as you try to step on them. You know, everybody, keep an eye on them. Try and find proper materials in the Department of Agriculture that are being put on.
And also, how best to kill them besides stomping on them? Because you live opposite the forest there and all those trees are endangering them.
Yeah, and I can say with tree tree applications, we have the fourth application on the agenda where the tree is 100% dead. And on Google Tree View, the tree was alive in 2018. So probably not spotted lantern flies, but you may have another tree problem.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call, motion to close. Motion is made to close by Councilman Gindi, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. All in favor?
All right.
Against the eyes have. There's one mayoral appointment to the Human Relations Commission, appointment of Jackquita Brown for a three-year term. We now move to our consent resolutions. Is ready to be read separately.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you please read separately? 215 and 219, please.
Anyone else to be read separately?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as you heard at my reports, we were talking about the fireworks. I know this is something that's coming up. So I, the question that we read the warrant or consent resolution separately that we had prepared outside of downtown.
Are you requesting that there be a resolution added to this list? Okay. I understand, Clerk, that this came in late. That you have this, okay, so it'll be 221 concerning fireworks at the South River Festival, I guess it's called. All right. Reading those two separate, anything else separate? Not, Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 2021-01, where the rest is under counsel, we utilize incentive gen to adopt various reservations of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved as a non-negotiable resolution to be by adopted by the Royal Council in the whole as a single individually active one. I will read you off the consent that's included in the three that we discussed. 204, except May 3rd, 2021, regular council meeting minutes. 205, except May 24th, 2021, regular executive session minutes. 206, except June 14th, 2021, regular council meeting minutes. 207, except July 19th, 2021, special council minutes. 208, authorize extended raise period for the 2021 through quarter taxes. 209, authorize status change for cadet to junior firefighter for South River Fire Department. 210, authorize appointment of junior firefighter for the South River Fire Department. 211, authorize appointment of cadet for the South River Fire Department. 212, authorize appointments of the coordinator and members to the municipal alliance. 213, authorize appointment of 19th Wednesday. 214, authorize special event permit for St. Mary's Home and Room Society. 216, authorize certain utility funds. 217, authorize purchase of a bucket truck for South River Land Department. 218, approve special event permit to Portuguese club. 220, authorize the bills and claims list. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second. Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Oliver. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes, with the extension, excuse me, extension of 209 to 10, 211. And on 220, 21-01900, 21-01948, 21-01275, 01278, and 01787, 21-01486, and 21-01897.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gudzinski?
Yes, with the extension to 209, 210, 211. Then down at 220, and the bills, 21-01900, 01275, 01278, 01787, 01486, and 01661.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gudzinski?
Yes, with the, I'd like to abstain from Resolution Number 214.
Thank you. Yes, with the extension of 218. Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes, with the extension of 204, 205, 206, and 218.
Thank you.
Consent resolutions have been adopted. Resolution 215.
Resolution 215, opposed to Jake Brown Road redevelopment plan. May I have a motion?
Motion. Motion to do what? Our tradition in South River is that when it's asked to be read separately, it is literally read separately.
The whole thing?
The whole, the whole thing, unless somebody makes a motion to waive the full reading. But that's how we vote at this here, so.
Okay.
So it would be Resolution 2021-215, Resolution of the Borough of South River regarding the Jake Brown Road redevelopment plan. Then you may read it, Madam Clerk.
So I'm reading?
You're reading, you're reading the whole thing.
Whereas the Borough of Old Bridge is planning to develop the area at the intersections of Jake Brown Road in West Highway 9 and Jake Brown Road in White Oak Plain, redevelopment plan. And whereas the Borough of South River, known as the Borough, admires Old Bridge's plan for economic redevelopment that are detailed in the redevelopment plan, unleashes Old Bridge well in their efforts. And whereas the current traffic pattern illustrated in the redevelopment plan empties traffic onto Borden Town Avenue.
Does it waive the full reading?
Second. Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Councilwoman Mara, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor? Against, the eyes have. Your pleasure on the resolution.
Make a motion, we'll do it. Resolution.
Second.
Resolution has been moved by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion?
I asked just for this to be read separately because I, I don't see where South River, where this bothers South River and Old Bridge redevelopment.
Mr. Landerski?
Borden Town Avenue still not a traffic for us. I mean, why would we not want redevelopment in Old Bridge?
Mr. Landerski, what was the discussion?
Well, the feeder roads from the borough and River Road is an important road. And Olbers Turnpike is an important road are going to get jammed by this. They have much better highways that they could load this off than Borden Town Avenue. We'll end up having a backup at River Road and a backup at Olbers Turnpike because the, the traffic will not allow that many cars to go through the lights. East Brunswick has done a more extensive survey on this. And the discussions with Cerebral is that their development, which is mostly, you know, commercial and industrial down there already are clogging the roads. So we don't, you know, we wish Olbridge well, but it, they're dropping everything off on the Borden Town Avenue is not going to solve the problem. Not going to improve Borden Town Avenue, it's going to make it worse.
And have not we learned all the trucks cutting through our town?
Yes.
And that will happen, without a doubt.
River Road is backed up now on a good day.
Well, just to add something to all this, which you are all unaware. I was unaware until I was informed that on the 4th, the Cerebral Planning Board is going to be voting, at least discussing, a redevelopment plan for the old Hercules property. They're planning to come in there and put in warehousing. And with lots and lots of truck traffic. Now, the idea is that it's not going to affect Cerebral in general because they're all going to go down Cheesecake Road to Borden Town Avenue. And from there, they will disperse. What I'm interested in is, my office happens to be right around there, so I'm interested in that aspect. But also, I'm going to be attending because that's only phase one. Phase two is to build more warehousing that will empty out onto Hurdle Street. If you don't know where Hurdle Street is, like me, you have to look it up. Guess where Hurdle Street jumps out, dumps out into? It dumps out onto Journey Mill Road. And if they're And if they're going to come out of Journey Mill Road, guess which way they're going to go to the turnpike over the bridge? Over the bridge and around that nice tight bend at Reed Street. So I'm going to be attending there. You can imagine what, if they weren't going in that direction, they're guess, they're going to go in the opposite direction on Journey Mill Road to Boardent Town Avenue. So.
Okay, but this redevelopment plan is for what? What is Old Bridge proposing?
How many houses?
No, mixed development.
Mixed development?
Yeah.
I'm just a firm believer that new development brings more people, brings people to more businesses, brings moves things in a better direction.
And a better direction would be to drop them on Route Nine.
Yes.
Not Boardent Town Avenue. Because I think if they were dropped on Route Nine, I mean, I don't think there'd be any problems at all.
I just don't see how it's going to affect that.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay. That's, you're right. Any other points to make? No, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gudzinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
No.
And Councilwoman Olivera?
Yes.
Resolution has been passed. Resolution twenty twenty one dash two nineteen, Resolution authorizing appointment of Patricia Zapata as an administrative assistant to the South River Utilities Department. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance, the resolution.
Mayor Frenzel, with advice and consent, that Council of the Borough of South River do provide the following appointment, Patricia Zapata to the position of administrative assistant of the Utilities Department of the Borough of South River. I'm starting salary of thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty dollars fifty-five cents as per forty-two fifty-five United Service Forces contract effective as of August eleventh, twenty twenty one.
Your pleasure on the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Resolution has been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gudzinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gudzinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
No.
And Councilwoman Olivera?
Yes.
Resolution has been passed. We've gone through the new business, which is the reading of resolutions. Just as soon as we finish the fireworks, that's about the South River Festival. Madam Clerk?
Resolution authorizing fireworks displayed by South River Recreation Department on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, with the date of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the South River Recreation Department of the Borough of South River has requested permission to make a play of displayed fireworks at the lone site on the South River Board of Education property, known as Denny Stadium.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second. Motion to waive the full reading by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the resolution?
Motion to pass the resolution.
Resolution has been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Mr. Gindi, would you please explain what this resolution is for?
Resolution is to pass the fireworks, which would be held on August twenty-sixth at the Denny Stadium.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we actually have the resolution before we say yes?
She was reading the resolution, and then there was a motion to waive the full reading.
Okay, but can we actually have the resolution? Nobody has the resolution. I understand we waive the full reading, I'd like to at least have some of that written on.
Anything else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman President Seola?
Yes.
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 Councilwoman Mara?
Yes.
Yes.
And now having done the resolutions that we've read, the new business, we now go to the governing body comments with the good and welfare of the borough. We started with Mr. Gindi last time, we'll start with Councilwoman this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand there was some mishap with today's meeting. I did have residents reach out to me that they could not find the agenda on our borough webpage. I didn't verify that, but it's not the case, we did not get it. Aren't we supposed to have the agenda up through the public?
It's not a requirement to have it, I asked that of the clerk, as to what happened. Apparently, it was sent over to the webmaster who just did not put it on. They put on the August ninth agenda, but not the August second agenda.
The notice is for tonight's meeting, I knew August ninth meeting, but no, no agenda on virtual whatsoever. However, we did, because we have set the agenda on where the USP Jones is.
So I hope going forward, now that we have adopted the webmaster and IT, that this will move a little smoother.
As fast as possible.
I forgot to ask what the status of our civics app is at the moment. Do we know a time where that will be going live, or not yet?
We're trying to launch by the end of the week.
By the end of the week? Okay. And I'm sorry, reading this last ordinance, I just realized that we also have here, you know, we're informing our borough contracted EMS. What is the status of our EMS since we knocked down the bid?
According to the RFP, Robert Wood Johnson extended their contract ninety days until we're going to go out for bid again, and see if we get someone to bid at a better solicitation than we did the last time.
Okay. Will that be next meeting, or September? Do we have like an idea of when we'll be bidding for that?
We have, three months, we'll probably be going out the end of August for rebid, and have it for September to appoint for the next two to five years.
Right. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I see that we are repealing the, the PEP ordinance. I'm curious to know, what have we done with the money that we do have in that right now, Mr. Zayn? So there, there are applications that went before the, I'm not sure if it was planning or zoning board. One of their regulations to be able to do their work would be doing that, correct? And nobody has paid that so far. I would say before we repeal this, we should look into the applications that had already been approved with this in it, see where the money will be going, because it's supposed to be for parking, the parking utility. Has anybody researched this? Because I am almost certain that at least two applications were approved with this PEP. So if you have not received any money, then something is up.
Mr. Gindi, could you take a look into that?
Okay. I'm not sure if it was planning or zoning, but I know off the top of my head, the applications that I'm thinking of, so I'll reach out to you. Other than that, hopefully we'll have more fun, exciting things for the next meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gudzinski.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank our public service workers, our police, our fire, and Robert Wood Johnson for taking care of us. Also, in our DPW, our Utilities Department, for the quick response that they had from the incident that we had back on Main Street with the power outage. Of course, entailed quite a few other things too, as far as traffic went and the paving of Olbers Turnpike, and also it was resolved quite quickly. With that, we've finally gotten a little bit of a break in the weather and everything like that too. School will be starting up soon, so it's going to be, keep an eye out for the kids and everything, they're going to probably be a little bit restless with things opening up and all, and they're out there in parks and what have you. With that, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
As Councilman Gudzinski said, just want to thank the police, Chief Department, H, for all your hard work. As we're going through summer, you know, my family and I, we like to go to the parks on the weekend, one of the things I've noticed is our parks are littered with trash by Sunday night. So H, is it possible to get some more trash cans and strategically place them? I know JFK Park by the basketball court, you know, and I believe it's tough to walk five yards to throw it out. Maybe if we can put some trash cans by the hoops on the side next to Elm Street, you know, this way we can try to clean up the parks. I know the guys on Monday did a great job doing that, but if we can try to minimize it as much as possible, you know, that would be, that'd be awesome. The other thing is, speaking to some of my neighbors, you know, please make sure you're picking up after your dog. You know, a ton of times, there's, you know, just be mindful of your neighbors. And for right now, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Mrs. Ballas?
Actually, I was going to also mention what Councilman Olivera said. There's nothing like stepping out of your car and having a nice little surprise from your neighborhood. Needless to say, I was always a big proponent of, we have to follow up on this, there's signs all over, but, and especially on by the school, they walk the dogs on that hill, and I don't really notice them picking up after them. And those kids, you know, especially when school starts, they will be having a little surprise. I'd also like to thank the Police Department, the Borough workers, the Fire Department, and first responders. You were all put to the test this past week or so between the downed poles and the house fire up on Redwick Way, and you saved, you saved a lot of, you saved lives, you saved property, and, and again, an excellent job. And of course, I have to say something about Drew. I want to congratulate his family. I, I know that they'll be down there with him over the weekend, and I understand two is quite, maybe a little contingency from South River. And when I checked, if you want to watch it, it's going to be on Sunday night on the NFL Network at seven. So far, that's the only channel that's showing it, which I don't get on my cable, so I'll have to go somewhere else to watch. But congratulate them all. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Like the mimic, what Councilman Ballas said about the DPW Electrical Department did a phenomenal job Tuesday night, I happened to be out there. Very well put together, the Police Department did a very awesome job on road control and all. Please stay safe to everyone that's out there. Fireworks, I know it's been hard this whole year, especially with the pandemic, we're happy to see that's going to be coming. Cross your fingers, I know the Delta virus has been the talk of the news. In the last past few months, I have been looking into Blue Acres. Reason I'm bringing this up now is because I want it on the agenda, it's possible for the August twenty-third. After going through the Blue Acres, speaking to the E.P., I found an interesting loophole that could benefit this town. So if you could, please have this on the August twenty-third meeting.
Would you put that under the agenda session, Madam Clerk?
Please, I'll have everybody with the information in their packets, so you see what I saw, and hopefully we can work on this. The weather is great, please watch out for kids in the road, they're in and out, be careful, stay safe, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank our, all our first responders. They do a fantastic job, day in and day out, and nobody really gives them any credit for what they do, but they do a fantastic job. As everybody was saying here about the truck accident the other night, took down two poles, the pole happened to be a Verizon pole, and when our headquarters called Verizon, it was two and a half to three hours before they could even get somebody out there. Our guys took a look at the wires, and with the help of the PD, holding all the traffic back, keeping all the roads closed. They untangled the wires while the pole was floating in the air, hanging off the wires. After they untangled them, they actually got the power back on in a short period of time. They held the wires up with, with poles so the bucket trucks could get underneath the wires to get to the certain areas. And people ask why we need bucket trucks. Here's a perfect example. A small bucket truck got under the wires, were able to untangle the ones under Bo, two large bucket trucks got over on Main Street, and they got those untangled, and the power was restored. During this time, when power was out, people were using generators. I understand somebody actually called and complained about the noise of a generator. There was no power, there was an emergency situation, and somebody complained about noise. I couldn't believe it. So again, be kind to your neighbors, look out for them in an emergency situation, especially on the elderly, if it's hot, check in on them, make sure they're okay. And with that, Mayor, I just want to say one other thing, congratulations to Drew and his family. He's an awesome guy, he does a lot for the town and a lot for the kids, so congratulations to Drew.
Yes, by all means, congratulations, Drew. It's, it's about time that you got there, you can find on YouTube how they surprised him with that, that, when he found out about it, and it's nice that Roger Staubach is going to be there to bring him into the Hall of Fame, so that's a good thing. To thank some people, I want to thank Sal and your recording crew there, Sal, did a good job. You know, it's, I know it's tough trying to record these meetings, especially in a place like here, but thank you for your work. The electric company, again, you just heard, you know, getting the electric back there. I was in Cerebral when I, my phone just started going crazy, with everybody telling me, it's like, you know, there's no power in town, it's like, bad power in Cerebral, but it was only the one circuit, and they did a great job, they were able to jerry-rig the whole thing and to get us through it, because otherwise it would have been a long hot night there. So thank you to our Electric Department, to our first responders, especially the Fire Department, one o'clock in the morning on Sunday, they put a fire over on Redwick, prevented more damage. Thank you to all our first responders for getting out there, it's, it's tough to do, but it can be very rewarding. They need volunteers, remember, the house you save may be your own. Finally, a special council meeting will take place on August ninth at seven P.M. Most likely, probably, it'll be at sixty-one Main Street, pay attention to the news as to what is going on. We may all be there, but having to wear masks, don't know. It might be a Zoom meeting. Pay attention, but as of now, it's at sixty-one Main Street. Basically, all that we're going to be doing is voting on the ordinances that we could not vote on today because of the advertising snafu. We do have our next regularly scheduled council meeting will take place on August twenty-third at seven P.M., and we should be all back to normal at that time. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, they have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to close?
Second. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? We stand adjourned.